Okay, well, we'll call the meeting to order. Just a wee bit of instructions Kim and I had went over already. I'll read the motions and the last remover and the seconder and Kim will, you have to put your hand up if you move it or second it, Kim will keep track of that. And then we'll just go back to the normal procedure. And hopefully, everything will work out not too bad. So as for the calling of the roll, please.
You, Mayor Edie.
Present.
Reeve Eamon.
Present.
Counselor Coles.
Present.
Counselor Evans.
Present.
Counselor Hines.
Presence.
Counselor Jamison.
Presence.
Counselor Sidney. We have a quorum, Mayor Edie.
Thank you. A declaration of general interest on the general nature thereof. There are none. Okay. The first motion being that the regular meetings of council held from April 14, 2020 be adopted as printed. Mover, please.
Peter.
Seconder.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Any comments or questions on the meeting? There are none. All in favor. Okay. Next motion is that the minutes from the founding advisory committee meeting held April the 7th, 2020 be received. Mover, please.
Okay, Counselor Jamison. Counselor Hines.
You got a second there as well?
Yes.
Okay, turn it over to Counselor Hines for her report.
All right, this is the meeting that we had Tuesday, April the 7th. We received the minutes of March 3rd, which were already at council on the 24th of March. We had, we started out with a public meeting of planning in regard to 499 Ragland Street North, which is Rentford Victoria Hospital. And that was in regard to a zoning amendment. And actually, this has already been before council on April the 14th. The public meeting, there were no public comments, no one was there to comment on it. And the planner had not received any written comments. The meeting, the public meeting was adjourned at 6:27 and at 6:28, we began the regular meeting of planning. And the first item there was two other items that came in regard to Rentford Victoria Hospital. And the first one was the deeming bylaw and the second one was in regard to the site plan. And as I said, these were already at council on April the 14th. And they were passed at that time. So moving to page four. In regard to the A-frame signs, we're still talking about that. We're going to see some samples possibly at the next meeting. We spoke in regard to the county's official plan and the provincial approval on that. We have some concerns in regard to that, in regard to the population estimates. And the mayor actually was good enough to contact the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and speak to Mike Elums there in regard to the numbers because, I mean, we may be expanding beyond that. He didn't get a whole lot of satisfaction there. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Don. But basically, it is what it is. And I guess we just approach it when, if we should expand. Yep.
I can speak to it now or do I wait?
Sure, that would make sense.
Okay, I did, I had a talk with Mr. Ellen and told, expressed some of our concerns. I asked him to send me back something in writing. As he said, the official plan is already banned, it's done deal with the province. And so the only way we can change anything now is go through the county. I discussed it with fairly good length with Planner Withers. I sent him a copy of the email as well. And so he's working on it right now and I presume he'll bring this back to the next planning committee meeting.
Okay. Then we spoke in regard to some property standards issues in regard to Giant Tagger. And I can tell you that that's already been addressed and looked after. At each meeting, we do go over some of the developments going on, just to have an update on them. So Planner Withers updated us on 278 Ragland Street, the old Byway Store. They're kind of in the process of submitting design drawings and it's moving along, although slowly. We spoke of the Lapine Development, which was at our last planning meeting and the meeting of council. And that is moving right along. In regard to the art factory. The planning department is working with Mr. Mills and just in regard to a few issues of parking, but that is moving along. As we discussed, the hospital submitted their site plan for construction of a new deck and cafeteria. The cafeteria as it stands now will be there. And it'll be expanded out onto where the deck is at present. And the atrium or the large room that's off the cafeteria will be now a learning center. And the deck will also look after housing the new generator that's going in there. In regard to the old Lindsay Mill. The fencing has gone up and they are in the process of, they are in the process of tearing it down. They are harvesting all of the wood and brick and such inside. The O'Brien Road proposed restaurant, we didn't have any update at this time. The O'Farrell project on O'Brien Road is still moving forward and it has been discussed at Development Works. In regard to, there was another item that we brought up at the very end. And actually, the planning department is looking after it. And it's the old Toyota building. I guess there was a tarp over the sign at the top and it's come down and it's presented a dangerous situation. So the planning department has called the bylaw enforcement and they're looking after that right now. Not, not as we speak, but they have looked after. Just, what else? And we're still, we haven't gone anywhere on temporary garages. We haven't had any issues in that. And we're going to be writing something into into the planning, but that hasn't come forward yet. And because it hasn't been an issue, there's been a lot of projects that the planning department have been dealing with. So that will come in its own time. And there was a concern also at 110 Opiongo Road, which has also been looked after. It's where the Yves Trough and some of the Basha come down. And that was presenting a quite a dangerous situation in the wind. So that has been looked after already. And that was basically the meeting.
Any questions or comments? There are none. All in favor.
Yep, sorry, couldn't find the screen.
Okay. The minutes of the finance committee meeting held on April the 9th, 2020 be received. Mover, please. Seconder.
Okay, I got, thank you.
Okay.
There's not much to report on this. We did have one, one basic request. That was to a second ago. All right, I had the wrong meeting there. The base one was to be resolved with the application for consent from John LaCourse. And basically, what's happened is he built a foundation. Foundation will be for a semi-detached versus a single dwelling, which is the way the planning department likes it because once it's built, then the surveyors can get the line directly down the middle. If they surveyed it first and then done the foundation later, it would be a little more difficult. So it's standard procedure. And you know, where everybody was in favor of it, well explained by the planner. Other than that, I've nothing to report on the planning committee meeting.
I think your worship. Right?
If I could, Mayor Edie. We got a mover and a second for the finance committee minutes. We jumped over the adjustment, which is just reviewed. So if we could get a mover and a second for those minutes.
I think we missed the motion in regard to committee of adjustment.
That's what I did. Yeah, I did that.
Yeah.
So if we could get a mover and a second for those.
Okay, so we need to move for that, please.
Hey.
Seconder.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you the explanation on that. So all in favor. And I'm not sure any questions, but all in favor. Eric, Carrie.
So we do have the next motion moved by Counselor Evans and seconded by that the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on April 9th, 2020 be received. So I'll turn it to you, Mayor Edie.
This was a fairly long meeting in a sense. And what we did, we did have a report basically from all the departments. And if there was any questions on this meeting, I would think the best thing we could do is if you have a question of any department, that would be a time to ask it. I believe all the department heads are with us tonight. There's no questions or comments then? All in favor.
What, sorry?
Any questions from Reeve Eva?
Yeah, I had a question, sorry. Just, it was about the meeting itself. We had a conversation about about the memo I'd sent to committee and then subsequently was shared with senior management team. And I think we've talked about going back to it, but I thought there was agreement around the one point about April 1st. If things hadn't been, if equipment hadn't been ordered by April 1st, that there wasn't going to be any, any. I don't see that in the minutes. And I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand that. If I misunderstood it, then we have to do something a little differently. So if someone could clear up what I thought I understood and what might have happened.
Are you saying at the finance meeting, you discussed that?
Yes, may I remember, wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we had, I had put that memo forward and it was brought up at the very end of the meeting. Point was the April 1st and the asset management plan. And my impression was there was a lot of nodding of heads at that time. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that if something hasn't been ordered by April 1st, it wasn't going to be ordered without counsel. Because that was one of the points in the memo that I had forwarded. But if I misunderstood that, I want to make sure I misunderstood it and rectify it.
Let me ask Counselor Coles, I think, is there something on the development works meeting on that regard?
No, there's nothing in the minutes.
Tonight, okay. Thought I seen something someplace here on that.
I don't really recall that, Peter, but I'm sorry.
Well, I recall because Chief Welch brought me the copy of the memo because I couldn't find it on my BlackBerry. And so we did discuss it because I read from it. And so make sure I understood what was going on. So I believe Chief Welch would remember handing me his memo before he left because he had to leave early for another meeting.
Maybe Treasurer Riley has some input on that.
My recollection is that the topic was introduced as was said, the discussion went full circle. And I recall it being that it behooves various levels of government, including municipal governments, to in fact, invest in local infrastructure to boost the economy. And that's sort of the way it went around full circle as opposed to doing nothing and I think we would have the discussion that to try to get things moving. In fact, further ahead to proceed with the project and proceed with the other at this point in time. Because there hasn't been a freeze by the provincial government on the funding as far as we know. And again, just to keep the, some kind of in the local economy.
I think what Reeve Eamon was referring to though was the purchasing of equipment. It wasn't purchased, I know he sent a letter at one point in time or an email. And it was about, as a suggestion, that if if it wasn't purchased by April 1st, that we wouldn't purchase. I don't recall that being talked about either. I'm sorry, Reeve, I don't remember that being talked about at the finance committee meeting either.
Okay, that's fine, fine. I remember, I remember reading it out, but I guess I must have misinterpreted it. My apologies.
I just don't recall. Anyway, any other discussion?
This worth speaking about. I understand we're going to have a finance meeting in the near future. So maybe we could talk about that. Yeah, I remember talking about some of the projects such as the parking lots carrying on. But I don't really recall in regard to purchases.
Okay. Mayor, or can, can we just do a mic check?
Yep, go ahead.
Mike asked, is your microphone on or can you speak?
I can speak, yes. I didn't want to interrupt anybody.
Okay, sorry, did you want to say something? Let's go through the mayor. Right, Mayor, go ahead, Mike, or sorry.
Yes, I do recall having a discussion about whether or not capital purchases were going to proceed. And I recall the direction I took out of the meeting was essentially that that we would be proceeding with tenders, but we would not make any commitments to any capital purchases unless there was a business plan or an argument brought back to council. And I recall like our backhoe was a good example where if our backhoe was not replaced, then we'll have to do some additional work to it to get it by. And we did discuss it. So, so I thought the direction was that we proceed with the tenders and see what the pricing comes back at and, and have to bring it back to council for consideration of any capital purchases.
That was brought up though at Public Works, was it not?
No.
No, at Finance as well.
Yeah.
Was it, okay.
Your worship.
Yes.
I do remember that conversation in regard to having to put together business plan or report and bring it back to council for whatever we were intending on purchasing under capital. I do recall that.
Okay. Okay, I recall, I recall having that conversation too. I just thought it was at Public Works, but that's fine. We've had it someplace. So then we'll add that to the next finance committee meeting. So we'll have maybe go further interpretation on it. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. I just wanted to ask the question about item 6B, Innovation Center Financial Statements. And I know we have received the draft. This is under unfinished business from that committee meeting. Any idea of a timeframe as to when we will be discussing that enclosed?
I haven't had a chance to sit down with Treasurer Riley on this yet. I don't, I don't think there's anything else coming. He, there is the proper statements that I know of, that I've seen. So we'll have a conversation maybe before the end of the weekend. If you can get something on to possibly the next council meeting.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There are none. All in favor.
Arlene.
You have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question.
Oh, sorry, you had a question?
Yes, I had a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Oh, it was there. So.
I don't even see you on my screen. I do now, but I didn't before.
Oh, okay, well. On the deferral, the last item on, on your agenda there, item eight, the deferral from a business and you deferred the conversation. Is this deferral as a result of the COVID-19? It's referral, a request for referral for amounts owing to the town.
Turn that over to Treasurer Riley for his update on that.
The reason given for the request was as a result of the and business resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Okay, any further comments? Sorry, I can't see everybody here on the screen. Oh, I miss, I'm missing. Right now, I'm missing Counselor Coles and I'm missing Counselor Evans. So I guess.
Mayor Edie, if you want to try looking up at the top right, you may see you, it's a speaker view or a gallery view. So you might be on a different view.
Okay. If I hit that, now I get everybody else in it. But I can't get everybody in my screen, I'm big enough. Anyways. I guess what we'll do is when it comes to question time, you may just have to speak up if you don't mind. Okay, the next motion, the Treasurer Riley's report dated April 24, 2020. Considering the waiving of penalty and interest charges on 2020 interim tax installments, 2020 water sewer billing due April 15th and June 15th be received. Mover, please. Seconder.
I got it, thank you.
Okay, they will ask Treasurer Riley for a report, please.
The report in front of you is based on the actions that have been taken by several municipalities in the area and a large number of municipalities right across the province when it comes to providing some form of financial goals that are suffering the effects of the pandemic in the sense that they either have lost their jobs, lost their business or whatever. And the consensus seems to be, and I sit in on at least two webinars a week with the Municipal Finance, Municipal Finance Officers Association of Ontario and through AMLE. And the consistency seems to be with waiving the penalties and interest on tax installments. And the second one is on the water payments that are due. So there, there are two bylaws that you have, that you will consider. First one is to penalty and interest charges on the first two installments, the two interim tax installments for 2020. The one that was due March 27th, that was dealt with by council at its meeting at the end of March by resolution. But we do have a second installment coming up at the end of May. And the proposal would be that not, that not charge interest on either one of those installments until it's open ended. So basically, article that said there would be penalty and interest would be removed from the interim tax bylaw that was passed in January. And once we get to the point that things return to whatever the new normal is, that section would be added back into the bylaw. Makes the determination that yes, we're going to start charging penalty and interest again. On the water side of things, we're looking at waiving the interest and penalties on the two billings that are due. One's due the 15th of April, so it's come and gone. But we don't apply interest until the first of the month, which would be this Friday. And the second one would be to waive penalties and interest on the payments that are due on the 15th of June as well. Just to provide some relief. Estimated impact on the tax side of things. That would cost about $4,800 a month in lost interest revenue. And on the water charges, it would reduce by about $1,300 per month on interest and penalties by not applying the late fees.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor? I guess, Kirk Bulmer, if you see everybody, you'll know whether passed or not.
Yes, I can see everyone and I'll watch their hands. So everyone was in favor, no one.
Okay, now we get into the bylaws. The Treasurer Riley's report dated. Okay, just a second here. Okay. Okay, the bylaw 30-2020 being a bylaw to man by law number 2-2020 in order to waive penalty and interest charges for interim tax installments with due dates of March 27th and May 27th, 2020. Be read, be read the first time and deemed to be read a second time. Mover, please. Seconder.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on this? All in favor. Okay, the bylaw 30-2020 being a bylaw to man by law number 2-2020 in order to waive the penalty and interest charges for interim tax installments with due dates of March 27th and May 27th, 2020. Be read a third time and be passed. Mover, please. Seconder.
Thank you.
Any further questions? There are none. All in favor.
Here, Reeve Eamon has a question and I'll call them out after so I can see everyone. So Reeve Eamon, if you want to go first.
Yeah, yeah, it's not so much a question as a comment. I'm glad we're doing this. And then secondly, I, I'm presupposing that this will be part of an overall strategy that'll be discussed or refined at finance and then brought back to council in case there's other measures that are necessary.
Thank you, Counselor Coles, you also had your hand up?
No, I was just, I was just voting.
Okay. Counselor Evans, do you have a question?
That is the vote to, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, that's all the comments and all in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, the bylaw 31-2020, we need bylaw to waive the penalty and interest charges for water and wastewater billing with due dates of April 15th and June 15th, 2020. Read it first time and deemed to have been read a second time. Mover, please. Seconder.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? There are none. All in favor.
Yep, Carrie.
Okay, the bylaw 31-2020 being a bylaw to waive the penalty and interest charges for water and wastewater billings for due dates of April 15th and June 15th, 2020. Be read a third time and be passed. Mover, please.
Thank you.
Seconder.
Yep, we got it, thank you.
Again, any further discussion? There are none. All in favor. Very.
Thank you.
Okay. At the Integrity Commissioner Services annual report 2019, amount of rent to be received. Mover, please. Seconder.
Thank you.
Maybe I would ask Kirk Bulmer if he wants to give a short report on this.
Yes, thank you. So this is our annual report. It's actually the first report we've received from our integrity commissioner. It's integrity commissioners reports are fairly common in the larger centers. And now that all municipalities in the province have an integrity commissioner to report that we're going to see on an annual basis to this council. And basically, it just goes, goes over the duties, responsibilities of the integrity commissioner, the process by which complaints can be raised. And also it just gives a really high level overview of his services for the year past. And also, it just gives a really high level overview of his services for the year past. I had sent out an email earlier this evening with the full report. I think some pages were missed in your packages. So if there's certainly any questions, certainly can let me know or I can try to answer tonight. Otherwise, as you know, our integrity commissioner, which is, which is the law firm of Cunningham and Swan, Mr. Tony Fleming, certainly he's available as always to, to provide advice on matters of code of conduct and matters of conflict of interest for, for members of council. So certainly keep that in mind. And again, we, we appreciate those services and having certainly a neutral party to to provide that advice and to, to guide through complaint process if, if it's ever required, so.
Okay, any questions? Everyone?
Councillor Heinz had a question?
I just have a comment and it appears on page three that he's quite willing to come and do some ongoing training. And I'm not thinking that we need ongoing training, but I think just somewhere in the future, maybe 2021, or when we get through this into the fall, that it might be great to have him come and just do a short highlight in regard to the code of conduct, just an overview of that now that we've worked through it. For this far into our term, I think it would be a good idea to have him come and speak to us.
Yes, certainly. And if councillor would recall, our initial training was done as a group effort with some other municipalities. And so perhaps I could reach out and maybe an opportunity to have Mr. Fleming come up and present to all the local communities that have engaged his services, just for cost effectiveness.
Yep, that would be great.
Councillor Sydney, you had your hand up earlier as well?
Yeah, it was just more of a comment. I actually, through the clerk's office, reached out to them as I had a question for potential pending conflict. Their professionalism and knowledge is outstanding. The report I got back was pages and pages of case law and everything, so if anybody does have questions or whatever, I highly recommend you go through it because they educate you very well. So it's good.
Anything else? I guess not, all in favor? Very. Let the press recommendation on facilities committee minutes 2020 be received. Over please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seconder, yeah, okay. Turn it over to councillor Sydney for his report.
Um, so this meeting was April 8th, 2020. It was more of a, I wouldn't necessarily say it was an emergency meeting, but it was a, a meeting that was to bring us up to date as to the impact of COVID-19 on the recreation department and what's been happening since the closure of all of our facilities. So the staff, first of all, I want to commend the staff and through the leadership of Director Hill and his management staff, things are getting done at the facilities that have not been done in 30 years because they didn't have time or an opportunity because of the busyness of the facilities, so lots of work is being done there. But more importantly, the, the big thing was the revenue impact that is going to happen to Parks and Recreation because of the closure of the recreation facilities, not being able to do the hockey camp, so wedding receptions. All of those things are going to have a very large impact on the budget of the recreation department. So Director Hill, we had this meeting, bring the committee up to speed as to where we're at, where potentially get to, and it was a great discussion. So that was pretty much all that was on the agenda was the COVID making impact.
Any further questions? There are none, all in favor? Very. Director Hill reported April 24, 2020 concerning Town of Brentford Canada Day celebration be received. I've heard the Rensworth Town Council direct staff to cancel the Town of Brentford Canada Day celebration schedule for July the 1st, 2020. Over please.
Thank you.
Seconder.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll ask Director Hill to give us a short report. I think you're on mute.
Glad I wasn't. Anyways, at the April 8th meeting, we, we did discuss some of the service cuts that we would be looking at as a result of COVID-19. And at that time, it was expressed that we were hoping that the new normal would be back by that date. And as a result, we presented the budget based on the July 1st end date. And we sat in on a meeting last Wednesday with the, all the Brentford County CIOs and clerks. And any of the municipalities had elected to cancel Canada Day. After that meeting, we discussed it as a senior management team and we felt, given the direction of the Bluegrass Festival, you know, cancelling and a number of other attractions in our area. I present the staff recommendation for council's consideration that we cancel Canada Day and that we put off the, the funding for Canada Day to celebrate Free Year's Eve this year.
Any questions or comments?
I have one, Kim.
Councillor Heinz, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a couple of things. The grant, you've already received notice of the $2,700 grant. Are you looking into, see if that could be applied to New Year's Eve in light of us not being able to do Canada Day?
We have reached out to the, to, to the heritage and they could not answer at the time when I prepared the report. Joanne made a phone call to find out. We have received the funding. It's just a matter of whether we will have to turn it back or not, but we're, we're optimistic that we will be able to use those funds for a later event.
Oh, okay. And the second question is, how much is the budget right now for the New Year's Eve through year eve?
Free Year's Eve, annual budget's around $3,500.
Okay, and you're looking to put the $14,000 from Canada Day into that?
Correct.
Okay, I just wouldn't want to do that and then come to 2021 and then be expecting to have that much money in there again. I'm not. Is that something that would have to go back to finance because you're moving money from one budget to another or on the recommendation from the rec committee?
I, I believe that, you know, what I'm looking for is to, I guess, we've done a lot of planning for Canada Day. We've ordered fireworks, we had entertainment in place, we, you know, we had a number of the activities in motion. So there, and, and, you know, say, say COVID-19 is not back to a new normal by then, we would not be, you know, we'll be recommending that we be cancelling that event as well. But understanding that if we spend extra monies this year, it's not a given that we would spend extra monies in the future.
Okay, Your Worship?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that explanation makes more sense. I didn't see that in the content of here, but if you already have things booked and you're able to, you know, use them at the end of the year, then I'm fine with that.
I could
Thank you.
To say on that, I think that everything we have right now is almost like a movie character that they're going to encounter that situation. So I'm sure that somewhere in the next few months, we'll sit down, we'll probably be talking about this type of situation again. And it'd be a little more clear possibly by, you know, midsummer where we are in the, in the Colby and whether we want to be. We may not, we may not even have a Christmas situation going on. So, but anyway, later on, we'll be, I'm sure we're going to be talking to this many times over the next few months. That's all I have, anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, with the Waste Management Committee meeting for March 2nd and April 6th, 2020 be received. Over please.
Thank you.
Seconder.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Reeve Emo for his explanation.
Thank you, I'll go through the March 2nd one and then head to April 2nd, or April 6th, sorry. So March 2nd, we met, and if you go down to item 6.1, essentially just talked about the, the AML blue box webinar and getting ready for making a declaration as to when we wanted to transition. You threw the motion, making sure that we have a multi-use residential location, that the multi-use residential locations also have a standardized recycling program. And we targeted January 1st because we wanted to try and have the whole community in place so that when the new provider took over, it was there for them as well. And we're going to bring it, we believe at this point in, is May, we'll be bringing the recommendation to we talked about it, we had another meeting this week and you'll get the minutes at the next council meeting. Item number seven, good news, we had a surprise, surprise inspection by the ministry and it went well. And so we're happy with that. There was some training as well. At that point, we also heard about battery recycling, just a notification, it was a new company was taking over. We, we've got some more information coming to the next council meeting that'll be a little more reassuring for you. And then 7.2, if you look, you'll notice recycling at that point and to date, we still haven't got information from, from Bowman's about our data call so that we could get some funding back. But it's like, and it, I think that we've had an estimate to provide it, get some money back out of that. Move to the bottom of the page. We'd asked Aqua to talk to us or give us a recommendation on bio solids management practices, but because it's 100 metric tons approximately of waste that cake, I guess it's called, that's put into the landfill on an annual basis and we'd like to reserve our capacity. So the highest option, as you see, is to transport to agricultural land for application. And there are some things that we need to work out. So we're going to speak with the agricultural community and then also talk to Mississippi Mills who, who has implemented a similar program. Moving down to item number eight, halfway down the page, we've had some conversations about, about fiber. I've, I know I've had conversations with individual council members as well. And we think we've been well served by our, some of our local businesses that allow these bins to be placed at their properties. And we're grateful that they don't, they don't get upset because people are putting all sorts of stuff there and it's, it's a bit unsightly at times. So we're trying to, we were trying to at that time come up with a different strategy and that's been put on hold. With that, we had a meeting on April the 6th. And if I move down to item number eight on April 6th, we just talked about the two main haulers and other people as needed who've had access. They call staff and staff have gone down to let them in, to try and keep things moving at the landfill site. We reviewed best practices. If you go to the second paragraph on page two, the main concern for landfill reopens is the shear, so that's S-H-E-A-R, there's a bit of a spelling mistake. And then if you move to the next paragraph, when you see midway down the paragraph, the committee did, however, recommend the staff formulate a plan for when the landfill site reopens instead of reopen. And those are the points that we were looking at being, being important to us. We also have an updated report coming into our next, into the next series of minutes. Then the yard and, yard and leaf waste has started this week. And there'll be a biweekly pickup for the next six consecutive weeks. Recycling tender, as you can see, it's still, it's a work in progress. And we'll have more information at the next, next report that comes to you on the May, our next meeting.
Any questions or comments?
We have councillor Heinz has a question.
Your Worship, through you to Peter, the landfill site, the issue with the batteries is no different than it was before. People will still take them there. It's just a new company looking after the collection of them, is that it or?
It's, it's a new company and there is a slightly different product profile which they will collect and not collect. So we're trying to get that sorted out. Right now, they're not going to collect computer batteries. We think that'll go in electronic waste. They're not going to collect batteries and toys that are built into toys. We're not sure what's going to happen with that. And also batteries for your, your drills and drivers and all sorts of things. Those rechargeable ones that you get when you buy a DeWalt or something. So those are problem areas for us. There also doesn't seem to be a supplier in place yet to pick up truck and large batteries as well. Their limit is up to five kilograms and they much outweigh five kilograms. So we are waiting and asking for more information. The switch over is July the 1st, so we have a little bit of time to get some clarity on it.
So are people still taking their batteries when it opens to the landfill site for recycling or what?
Yes, they're going to be able to and there are some, there are some drop off spots in the community for smaller batteries at the, at the and at the library as well, and people can still do that. So yes, that stuff's still in place until June 30th.
Okay, and just one other comment in regard to the surprise visit that you got from the ministry. I just want to say kudos to yourself and the Development Works Department and the previous council for setting up waste management the way that you did. It's, it's very organized and we seem to be very on top of, of everything when it relates to the landfill site, waste management, the whole nine yards of it. So congratulations to you guys for that.
Thank you. We're very fortunate, staff do all the work and we get to make lofty policy pronunciations.
It's very well done.
If you want to make just a couple of really brief comments about the possible reopening, I see on the minutes of April 6th on page two or three, we talked about traffic control and gate control and protective equipment, et cetera. I don't know if you want to make a comment.
I can, I can expand on that. We've, we've had some conversation. We, we know that as soon as it opens up the very first day or a few days, there will be a lot of traffic. So we're, we're aware of needing to control traffic onsite, so we're getting some signage to, to control it onsite. We're trying to, trying to figure out how many vehicles should be on site and how to space them out. We're also looking at some kind of traffic control out on Bruce Street. And if that's, you know, a bottom line from the county to, to allow us to slow traffic, but we'll definitely put signage out there as well. On site, you know, the interact will do like a method similar to Tim Hortons where the thing comes out and it's debit card only. Debit or credit card with a wiping provision by the attendant. A plexiglass barrier in the window we've talked about and less likely to occur. And correl, you know, on the outside of Scale House and in the interior as much as possible and masking if, if, if staff require it. We're going to move the bins around a little bit to maximize the space and really sign them so the people know where they're going and don't get, don't get caught up and get lost and get bundled up together. We may, we're taking a look at possibly an additional employee, so in that sawtooth area to make sure people move along and also to, to help them find their spot. So, you know, I think we're going to do everything we can and how an hazardous household waste is going to be put off. Put off probably for a couple of weeks after the, after the opening date. As you know, we're, the opening date is still in flux. We're dependent upon. Meeting the province's. Decree or definition or regulations about essential travel. I think we're at the point though where we can start making a plausible case very soon that this is going to likely be essential travel. Because people in an urban environment only have so much space to store, to store products, whether it's. Whether it, you know, it's trash or whatever. So, you know, we know that that has to happen at some point in the next little while. We, we know from informal conversation with the, with the province, they're aware that they have to make some changes. And and start loosening the controls. So our plan is that we have things ready to go. If there's an announcement or an indication that we can change things and consultation with public health, then we'll announce it and start implementing it.
Any other questions or comments?
Director Aslan with hand up.
Go ahead, Director Aslan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this topic of conversation with many of the municipalities around us and and there's a lot of work. Going in to see if if all the, all the landfills in the area and Whitewater and Horton. And McNabb and Armpire, if they can basically pick the same opening times and opening weeks, I think that'll reduce the amount of havoc. That that is caused by the opening. Certainly, probably the greatest number of inquiries we're getting right now are related to landfill hours and opening. And and we're working with the other municipalities to see if we can coordinate kind of a common, common program for all the municipalities in the area that may help reduce the. Load on rent through at that time.
Anything else?
Yeah, if I might, your worship, you know, I think we should really thank our residents and our businesses. They've been very patient, recognizing that. We've had some constraints on our ability to make decisions, you know, and any inquiries have been, that I've had received have been respectful. And but urging us to act as soon as we can. So, you know, I think we've been very fortunate that. Our, our public that we're serving has been very patient with us.
Also, any inquiries I've had, I've been passing them all on to yourself and. The committee members and. Director Aslan and his staff. And yes, and everything I've, anybody I've even talked to, everybody's been real respectful. They're very understanding. They just want to get back to normal and of course. At a different time. But anyway, anything else? On favor.
Thank you.
Next, next motion that the Development Works Committee meeting held March 10th and made from 16, 2020 be received. Over please.
Thank you.
Second.
Yes, thank you. I got it.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Counselor Colas for his report.
Um, we did, we did deal with a lot of things on March 10th that have been. Discussed at various times over the last two months within council and other committees. We did get a building report. Of course, as we do every month. Some of the revenues have already started to show a reduction there because of the lack of construction. I just touched on some of the highlights. Hot box unit that we are using from the county to do some asphalt patching around town. We did an extensive. Handout survey on Lisgar Avenue concerning the. Some of the, the complaints we've had about excessive noise and speeding and so on. We did get some feedback and that's in our second meeting that we, we. Actually received more feedback. We hand delivered some, some documents to various residents in that. Lock Hill Street, Lisgar Avenue intersection area, that three-point. Stopping corner and we did get some results back. Nothing, nothing. Out of the ordinary other than. The speed was a little, a little bit of a concern and of course, the modified muffler and exhaust systems that. Some of these vehicles are equipped with now and. We will, we will talk about that again shortly here. Municipal garage land, we have contacted the owners of property across the, the street, Lisgar Avenue from the current garage. Again, we will discuss that at the, at the next, when we, when we. Deal with the next meeting here. County Road 52, Redding Street South is. Still a go and will be done, we're assured by the development works. Staff and the director done this year. There is going to be some modifications done to Earth Boulevard as well. Make it a little bit narrower in the street part of it and probably a wider median. Make it a little less, less of a challenge to to plow and so on. McCandrew is also on the agenda for this later this summer to repave the bottom portion or the west portion of that street. We are in the process of looking into funding for Monroe and Harry Street. And I CIP application has been created. The connecting link funding for Stewart Street has still not been given the go-ahead to the town from the province. We're expecting that news very shortly. Like within days so that we can, we can get some shovels moving. We also discussed the tourist booth road naming. We, we need to build a road, of course, as you know, to accommodate the new construction of. Farrell, Farrell's, O'Farrell's group building on O'Brien Road. We intend to build a road in off of O'Brien and circle around and catch the back end of the, the parking lot. That exists currently at the tourist booth. We, we discussed naming that tourist booth road. After Audrey Green. We have, we have discussed naming some of these new streets and roads we are developing. After. You know, former council members over the years and we have, we've reached back into the archives, of course, and and asked. Some heritage people in town to give us some suggestions and we have them to discuss very shortly here. Lapine apartment development is ongoing and still on the, still on the, on the. On the agenda and moving forward. What else did we do here? We. Asphalt, that's not really as important. You can read about the asphalt patching program. Municipal lots, Counselor. Counselor Heinz mentioned earlier, they have that, that has been awarded to Greenwood paving to do the municipal parking lots. That's the three of them. Will have done probably within the next couple of months. I would say it'll start. We have some main street light problems going on with the, with these wraparound lights on the poles. Inbridge has been doing some construction around town with regards to their utility and not been forthcoming with. Their, their ask for permits from the town. So we. That, that took care of that meeting in March. That meeting was actually attended in person. And then the next meeting we had was. It says here Tuesday, April 16th, but it's actually Thursday, April 16th. Before somebody corrects me there. We did this one by Zoom as we do tonight. Some discussion about a developer and building a property, building a duplex on Fifth Street. And we have dealt with that. You can read about that in detail on this report. It was a request for, for some concession on building. The, we, we also, of course, had a building, a building inspector report as well. The hospital is going to head with their cafeteria. It's a, because it's a health. Construction geared to health. We can proceed as, as on schedule. Again, Lapine Department is, is moving forward. We had a waterworks annual report. I think we have that again tonight following this report. Again, the visitor traffic, again, that's become a real, it's become a very sore spot as. I mean, we have to have some of these. Excessive muffler noise pollution around the Our Lady of Fatima Church. Location on that intersection, five responses, excessive speed was one of them. Not performing a complete stop at the three-way stop. So these are, these are basically police enforcement issues. The loud sounds of modified muffler systems and squeaking of tires. There was even the mention of snowplows screeching while plowing. Well. Good luck with that. And the sound of snowmobiles day and night throughout the, throughout the winter months. I guess on the back trail that runs across the back of that property and out towards Lisgar. We have talked, we have actually, we do own a speed sign and we do have it located. Last I knew it was still on Lisgar Street further out. We have talked about speed signs at this committee, committee level. Do intend to come back to the, to, to council with a recommendation and a request for funding once we get past all this. This COVID-19 pandemic. And ask for some funding to, to. Purchase and acquire a few of these speed. Signs because they do work and we do have, we do have concerns about the entrances to Renfrew. Lisgar Street being one of them, but not the primary one. But 60 and, and, and both ends of 60, O'Brien Road and also out. Stewart Street. As well as the road coming in, the county road coming in from 17 on Bruce Street, Bruce Street. We do want to address that issue further with the town as we get closer to. Resolving this other issue that's going on now. Did talk about municipal land. And again, the tourist booth road naming, we went through a bunch of that and some suggested names. And we discussed it at length. Empire Ross Construction has just, tenders were just received today and opened. So that's a goal in the next. Probably in the next few weeks, there will be shovels in the ground there and. We, we've, we've made it very, very clear to our development works people that. Construction in town must go on. We feel it's very, very important to. If nothing else, to give the impression to the rest of the community that. Life goes on and we need to get some of these roads fixed. So we, we will certainly get at County Road 52, Empire Ross is a go-ahead. McCandrew repaving and of course, we really, we're fingers crossed on Stewart Street. To get that started this year, at least get some of it done. So that we, we, if nothing else, we, we bestow a feeling of confidence in our future in this community. Because nobody seems to know. What the new normal will be, but at least we can make our streets better and our sidewalks and. And that sort of thing and get, get the town in better shape. We do have, we did have some updates. We are in full discussion with BEI concerning our downtown core. And the deficiencies and the amount of money we've held back. And, and the fact that they don't agree with the, with these deficiencies. And have asked for mediation and it's an ongoing. Thing, but I can assure you that. Through our committee and the Development Works Department, that the main streets, topography and cement work. Will get done this year, whether we do it or they do it, but it will get done and it will get done early this summer. Again, Lapine Apartments update, it's, it's, we're just working with the developer to finalize the site plan. Municipal Garage Lands did come, they did come back to us with a price. We have a price now on that property. So that isn't a consideration state. And of course, council will be aware of that as we move ahead, probably the next meeting or the meeting after we will. Have some, have something to discuss possibly enclosed. We did talk about our financial situation and how it has been affected by this pandemic and that's about it.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Reeve Emo?
If you're on, you're on mute.
Yeah, I can't hear you. I can see you, Peter.
Okay, sorry about that. It must have went by itself. Very quickly on your March 10th. Your minutes, 7.3, before these minutes go to the public, after the town of Rentrew, you might want to insert the word four instead of two. And.
Come again on that again, Peter.
On your, on March 10th.
Yeah.
It's 7.3. After you talk about the town of Rentrew in that sentence, it says two and it should say four temporary use.
Are we on Lisgar traffic report?
No, the 7.3 on your March 10th minutes.
Okay, I'm on the wrong meeting. Hang on a second. Gee, where the heck is it?
Page three.
Oh yeah, okay, I'm getting it now.
Second line.
Yeah.
Council after to temporarily use the counties. So tell me where, where the mistake is.
The word two should be four.
That town of Rentrew four.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then 8.4, the sentence. 2G will go to step, will be set to go to tender on April 17, 20 with a close date of April 14.
Ah, yes, yes, I meant to mention that. I noticed that earlier today. Yeah, a little, a little backward, eh?
Yeah.
Yeah, pet the horse, yeah.
And then. Page, page five, the sentence above 8.6 where it says the upcoming years. 2021, I'm not sure what you meant there. Page five, just above 8.3.
Yeah.
Just before they go public, that's all.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions?
Aslan?
I, the. I guess the, the motion about standing, standing offers for consulting services. We're looking to go through a process this year to shortlist a number of consultants that will be able to do work for the town. In 2021 and, and future years. So the process will go out this year to select consultants who do work for us in the coming years, 2021.
Reeve Emo hands it up.
Yeah, if, if, if you're done with that, April 16th, the same thing. Page two. In item number six, the sentence or the, the paragraph that's under the failed motion. You have, the owners purchased the property, no one. So no one should be either knowing or something.
Yeah, knowing.
Okay, and then the second, the second last sentence, where it says a precedence. I'm not sure that's the proper term there. Probably a precedent as opposed to a dense. And then 7.3, the Lisgar Traffic Report, it's, it's parish. Church as opposed to perish like dead. And then on page four, just above the, just above the average speeds. Wrong peak. It should be an AK instead of an EK.
I typed this at night, Peter, come on.
Okay. All right. And then I forget, there was another one where it talked about, oh, on number nine, on that same, on page seven, on number nine adjournment. It said, I think he meant consensus instead of being conscious. I'm assuming everybody was conscious. That was all I noted.
Adjured, you mean?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Isn't easy to fix.
Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, number 15, that the annual report on 2019 building permit fees be received. Over please.
Thank you.
Seconder?
Thank you.
I think we just turn it over to Director Aslan for a very short report on it.
Where did he go? He's lost.
I think you're on mute, Director Aslan.
Yes, sorry, what item were you looking at for an update?
Just a little report on the annual report for the 2019 building permit fees.
I just hold on here, I'm gonna find it. Yeah, so part of the, part of the annual requirements in the building code is, is that a report, an annual report be presented to council? So here you have the summary of the total construction values. And going from 2016 is $9.9 million worth of construction value. Varies year by year going to 10,470,504 in 2019. So the building revenue created by the department varies as well from values of 80,454 in 2016 to 89,901 in 2019. The primary purpose of the report is to ensure that we are not collecting in excess of permit fees in relation to the value that it costs us to provide those services. So in Rentru, it's such that the, the cost of providing building inspection services exceeds the cost of, or the, the revenues that we do get. So we're not in a situation where we at all profit from this service. In the report as well, there's a breakdown of the building permits and the, the number of permits issued in, in various types. And you can see they, they vary, you know, year by year as well. And on the, the next page, the, we have a direct cost associated with providing the services, which is cost of wages, benefits and training of staff. And, and you see them presented there ranging from 115,000 to 114,000 in 2019. There's also indirect costs, the cost associated with having office space. And, and we've sort of partitioned some costs from the town hall into the indirect costs. As well. So again, this report is something that's required by legislation to bring forward to make sure that we're not collecting more revenue than it costs us. And that's not the case here.
Any questions or comments? We're not in favor. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, next motion with the 2019 annual, the water report prepared by Ontario Clean Water Agency. Safe drinking water system be received. Over please.
Thank you.
Seconder please. Again, I'll turn it over to Director Aslan for a short report.
Yeah, so on this one here, there, there is a requirement under the Safe Drinking Water Act to, to be transparent and to provide an annual report and make it available to the public. So this report's been prepared on an annual basis. And will also be put on our website and, and be available for anybody to pick up at the town hall or sent electronically these days. It, it reviews sort of the, the flow rates, regulatory compliance through, through the plant. So it's a quite a lengthy report, but I guess if there's any, any questions at all, I'm prepared to, to answer them. And there's nothing really that stands out in, in the water plant operations as far as problems or, or non-compliance issues. We're, we're doing well over there. There was this one set of samples that, that didn't make it to the lab to get tested. And that, that was acknowledged in the report, but our inspection rating from the operations that year was 100%, which, which we can't really get any better than that. There's a, a number of chemical and, and physical parameters tested in the water that's available to the public as well. If there's any questions, I'd be prepared to answer them.
Any questions? All in favor? Very. We're down to new unfinished business. And I want to say thank you to Councilor Heinz for my attention. I did have something prepared, but her version is much better than what I was going to present. So I'd like to do this now. I'd like to have a moment of silence following what I'm going to read here, please. The passing of American and the, our town, Rentru historian. Thinking of the folks in Nova Scotia who've probably lost their lives. And today, it's National Day of Mourning, where workers have lost their lives in the line of duty at work or injured or suffer illness due to workplace related hazards. We now can ask for a moment of silence, please. Okay, anything else for a new run face business? Revo for the stand up.
Thank you. The HR committee had a meeting today, so the minutes will be coming forward. But one of the motions that we passed, we're concerned that there might be an increase. We're getting some reports about an increase in overtime across the town air force. And so we're, we made a motion coming forward that they're, and I'm going to generalize it, it'll be much better when it's written, is that there'll be no need for overtime in this period, given the flexibility staff are afforded, unless there is some kind of a municipal emergency. It'd be much better worded, but that's just to, just to let you know ahead of time that it's coming. And memo itself would go to, to the department here, but also to county chairs.
Anything else for the unfinished? Hearing nothing? The Bylaw 32, 2020, being the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council heartbreak and counter rent through at the meeting held April 28, 2020. You read it first time and deemed to have been read it a second time. Over please. Seconder?
Thank you.
All in favor? Very. The Bylaw 32 dash 2020 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council operation at a meeting held April 28, 2020. You read it third time, it'd be passed. Over please.
Thank you.
Seconder?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you very much. We do now adjourn. It is 8:25.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.